All right, let me call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. Called and convened this January 26, 2016. Having called the meeting to order and being duly assembled, I'd like to ask you, if you would, to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then the invocation led by Councilwoman Judy Albert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day that you've given us, for each blessing that you shed upon us. We pray, dear Lord Jesus, that we will just learn to live and go in the way that you would have us go. And we pray that you will always remain here with us in the United States, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Again, I appreciate your presence with us this evening. Agenda is not long, but very insightful, and we've got some reports this evening, so glad you could be with us. With that, then, we'll move to the public forum. Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
We'll move, then, to the minutes of the council meeting from January 12. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council departmental reports are contained in your packet this evening. You have a number listed there of reports from December. The department heads will be glad to give you any additional information you might have, as well as Mr. Driggers. With that, we'll move to our financial report. Mr. David Seifert will lead us in that, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we bring to you the financial performance summary for the period ended December 31st, 2015. At that time, we had general fund revenue recorded at $5,136,133, with expenditures recorded of $9,283,177. That amount on the expenditure side is 4% under budget. Referencing the dashboard, we have an overall positive benchmark variance of $793,115. Now, carrying cash balance at December 31st is $3,447,626. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue recorded of $943,494. That is 6% over budget on the hospitality revenue. In that fund, we have $112,335 of expenditures recorded, with a carrying cash balance of And then, lastly, in the stormwater fund, we have revenue recorded of $49,820, with expenditures of $55,562. Now, as you're aware there, we are in the period where we're receiving taxes, so that revenue side for the stormwater fund will be increasing as the tax dollars come in through January and February. And then, at December 31st, the carrying cash balance in the stormwater fund is $776,224. Be happy to take any questions you might have at this time.
Council? David, does the vast majority of that ad valorem tax or property tax revenue come in in January and February?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time and your report. With that, then, we'll move to our first presentation of the evening. That is a presentation presented by Ms. Ann Cunningham, our Director of Parks and Recreation, and her staff, who will present their annual report. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A handout has been provided to each of you that contains the detailed 2015 annual reports of the Parks and Recreation Department. This document is comprised of participant numbers and events and highlights from each division that makes up the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as 2016 highlighted projects. I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you through a PowerPoint presentation some of those highlights. In 2014, we were awarded a grant from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for Century Park to demolish the current building and construct a new press box concession and restroom facility, with funds awarded by the National Park Service, with a 50% match from the city of Greer. In the fall of 2015, demolition of this building was completed, and the project was put out to bid for construction. The proposed plans for this project include a separate building for concessions with an upstairs press box, and another building located further out along the promenade that would provide restrooms, picnic shelter, and a small storage area for program and maintenance supplies. The original schedule of work for this project was expanded to address recommended upgrades in stormwater drainage and field drainage. The repurposing of Big Turner Field began in the spring of 2015, with addressing stormwater issues through regrading, stabilizing, and seeding certain portions of the playing field. A ditch was extended along the eastern side of the field, allowing for proper drainage of stormwater. This will allow us the opportunity to provide additional programming opportunities at this Greer City Stadium received several upgrades in 2015. A subterranean drainage system was installed to remedy the continuous soggy field condition in the south end zone. All concrete walls and seeding areas were painted. Repairs were made to an interior catch basin and retaining wall, and a new display board was installed. And we are really looking forward to using this facility for soccer and for our football The Victor Gym renovations are the result of combining two cycles of park funds from 2013 and 2014. We tore down and reconstructed the upstairs room in Victor Gym, and the following slides will show before and after pictures of the upstairs and the gymnasium. We replaced the existing room with a new larger room that encompasses most of the upstairs floor by extending the walls to the edge of the balcony. We left the ceiling open and hung drop lights, installed a new HVAC unit with exposed ductwork, added two new closets, and repainted the gym. We also had the opportunity to replace our scorer's table with one that is specifically designed for the city of Greer. Through a partnership with the Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce and the Greer Development Corporation, we were provided an estimate of the economic impact generated by three festivals in 2015: the International Festival, Freedom Blast, and Family Fest. Using data collected by a team of Clemson University researchers who conducted interviews during each event, and attendance data provided by the city of Greer and the Chamber of Commerce, an estimate of the economic activity and impacts of those expenditures was calculated using in-plan economic impact modeling. Each of the next three slides contains an estimated total direct expenditures, job-supported, sales tax, hospitality tax, and total output impact generated by each festival. This slide reflects the International Festival, and this was the second year of hosting this five-hour festival with a total output impact of approximately $104,000. Freedom Blast is represented in this slide. This past year was the seventh celebration of our veterans and servicemen and women, and is held from 6:00 to 10:30 p.m. the last weekend in June. There was an estimated $447,000 of total output impact for this event. And the third event, Family Fest, is a two-day festival sponsored by the city of Greer. The estimated total output impact from Family Fest was over $1,000,000. This slide reflects... Oh, I forgot. Sorry, y'all. This slide reflects the overall estimated impact of the three festivals held in the city of Greer in 2015. With 34,000 attendees, the total expenditures were $1.26 million, supporting 34 jobs, and over $66,000 in sales tax, and $19,000 in hospitality tax. The total output impact of these three festivals was $1.623 million. The fourth festival included in this study, Oktoberfest, was rained out this year. So a final economic impact study report will be generated by Clemson University after the Oktoberfest is held this year, and hopefully it won't rain. In May of 2015, the loose rubber fall safety material in the playground at Greer City Park was replaced with a pour-in-place fall safety material. The new surface meets all ASTM standards and is ADA compliant. The city of Greer partnered with Alta Planning and Design of Greenville on a preliminary study, which was funded by a grant through the Greenville-Pickens Area Transportation Study to complete a downtown walking and bicycling plan for the city of Greer. This plan recommends two phases: the first focusing on pedestrians, which includes utility relocation, intersection improvements, and street scale improvements, emphasizing safety. The second phase builds off of Phase One and is for all road users, which includes on-street bicycle facilities, wayfinding signage, and reallocation of existing pavement widths. The plan also recommends a long-term trail, all-street focused, with an intent to extend and leverage pedestrian and bicycle network with shared use paths. The recommended projects will link residents and visitors to Greer's downtown, to parks, schools, and other priority destinations. Recognizing this plan as a guideline for future development that may change as the needs of the city of Greer changes, city council adopted the master plan on January 12, 2016. Grant information for 2015 includes construction at Century Park, which is scheduled to be completed in the facility opened in 2016, with grant funds awarded in 2014 from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, with a 50% match from the city of Greer. The downtown walking and bicycling master plan was completed with grant funds carried forward from 2014, awarded through the Greenville-Pickens Area Transportation Study. We combined two cycles of park funds from 2013 and 2014 to tear down and reconstruct the existing upstairs room in Victor Gym. The Need More After-School program received $7,000 towards salaries, materials, and uniforms, and $3,000 was allocated for senior computer classes, and sub-recipient funds to the Greenville County Development Authority. And the Parks and Recreation Department's grounds maintenance division was awarded a grant through Partnership for Tomorrow in the amount of $1,500. Funds will be used for landscaping improvements to planners in the downtown Greer area. 2016 highlighted projects include our city auditorium, located on 100 Davis Avenue. The Parks and Recreation Department and the Greer Cultural Arts Council are working towards the development of a plan of action for future programming of this facility and for the grounds. We're continuing to evaluate any suggested upgrades or changes to the site and facility for occupying, such as completion of the installation of fire and security systems and any structural and/or infrastructure issues. The repurposing of Big Turner Field continues with the installation of backstops that will comprise three small baseball softball fields and one large multipurpose field. Plans also include adding concrete parking stops and barrier fencing on Lee Street. Future plans will include the addition of bleachers, lighting, and a restroom facility to be constructed between big and little Turner Fields, as well as a play structure. The new facilities at Century Park will be ADA compliant, and renovation of the plaza will allow us to address current stormwater issues and future field lighting upgrades. With monies generated through the Recreation Programs Fund, we plan to install a batting cage at Victor Park. This structure would mirror the ones we have completed at Country Club and Century Parks over the past two years. On March 10th and 11th, the Parks and Recreation Department will host the 2016 South Carolina Recreation and Parks Association's lead program in Greer. Young recreation professionals from all over the state will be attending. Department staff has contracted with Leathers &amp; Associates, the original architects for Kids' Planet One, to complete an assessment of both playgrounds to address overall conditions and accessibility related to current standards. This assessment will provide guidelines for possible needed repairs. In early spring, we'll advertise for qualified contractors to complete a master plan for our South Suburb Road Park. And in partnership with CPW, we will change the heads on our light fixtures at Veterans Park from 175-watt metal halox to 40-watt LEDs. We continue our efforts to go green and save energy, and will be able to reduce the cost of upgrading our lights by repainting the existing poles and only changing the heads. I'm very proud of the work and dedication of our staff members of the Parks and Recreation Department, and they've really done an incredible job, and a lot of them are here tonight. I'm very appreciative for the support and advocacy of our Recreation Association Board of Trustees, and our ad hoc committee representatives, and many of them are with us tonight, I believe. If y'all would stand, I would appreciate it. Please. Thank you. That's okay. Thank you, anyway. Okay. I am grateful, too, for the continued support and partnership with the Greer Cultural Arts Council. Many of our board members, again, are present tonight. I would ask that y'all stand. Thank y'all so much for what you do. And thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and I welcome any questions at this time that you may have.
Thank you. Council?
I'd just like to say, I think y'all do an outstanding job.
Thank you.
And all the events very well. Very good.
Mayor and I were talking about this a little earlier. How much money is it now that the county has given us so far? So much you can't remember?
That's right. No comments.
Have we been pleased with the pour-in-place pad down here on the playground? Has that met our expectations?
I think so. I know that our ground staff is very excited about it, and we've only heard positive comments. So we would love to have them everywhere. Maybe one day we will.
Good. Council?
I'd like to thank Justin Miller for his work on MLK this year, because I'm telling you, without him, we couldn't have done it this year. I mean, he worked above and beyond, so I'd like to publicly thank him.
Did an outstanding job.
Other?
Well, we do want to thank all of your staff for what they do, and certainly those that volunteer as well, too. We simply couldn't do it without you, and we thank you for the time and efforts and expertise that you bring, because that's one of the good things about volunteer committees is we're able to tap into parts of our community that, number one, we may or may not have an opportunity to do on a regular basis, but, secondly, to utilize the expertise of folks that live in this community and help make all our programs better. And so we're very appreciative of your efforts, and thank you for what you do to help lead us on the cultural arts side, as well as the recreation side. We appreciate your time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're on that same vein, and I know that Councilman Griffin will be quick to reflect or deflect any praise that we would heap upon him for the MLK event and point it toward staff, but, as I mentioned in my remarks the day of the event, that has truly grown into a legacy event and is a complete sell-out every year. And how in the world he and his wife continue to bring the quality of talent and young folks and others to that event is just amazing to me. And this year in particular, I don't know why, but this year in particular, I met more and more people that weren't from the Greer community and had more and more comments about how much they enjoyed coming to Greer for that particular event. And I think it speaks, not only highly, of our staff, but of the efforts that Mr. Griffin and his wife and family put into that event, and to a community that embraces it, to a staff that embraces it, and helps fund it, and council as well, too. I know that our efforts in that regard are truly appreciated. And, again, Mr. Griffin, a real thank you on behalf of not only the council, but our community as well, as that event has grown into one of the premier events in the upstate. And I truly do wish that we had a bigger place to do it, but we'll figure that out in time. And so you just continue to pack it out, and one of these days, we'll be broadcasting it live to another group over in...
The Cannon Center.
So, thank you, sir, for your efforts in that regard. Good event. We really appreciate it. Mr. Driggers, your report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, a couple of calendar items for reminders. Many of you are traveling next week to the Municipal Elected Officials Institute, the Advanced Institute. That training will be taking place next Tuesday in Columbia. And then also, several of us will be in Columbia next Wednesday for the Municipal Association's Hometown Legislative Action Day. So we'll be there next week. It's a busy week for us, as then we return on Thursday evening. We'll be participating with our partners over at the Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce. Their annual meeting is next Thursday evening. Many of you have indicated your attendance plans, and we're looking forward to that evening with our partners there. Also, want to make sure that you're aware that we'll have some additional information coming to you, but we are participating with the International Festival Gala that will be held here, and that will be taking place on February 26. I'll have some additional information coming out to you, but wanted to make sure that you could get that on your calendar as we start to prepare for that event as well. And then also, very important for us and your calendars, is our annual planning retreat. We've narrowed that down to the date that works best for each of you. We will start, and will do some of that work, as part of your council meeting on Tuesday, March 8, and then we will gather here for a day of activity on March 9, and then a partial part of the day on the 10. So that Tuesday evening, as part of your council meeting, that'll be very brief. It'll be more introductory in nature. And then we will roll up our sleeves and spend the day on Wednesday, and probably about a half a day, or maybe two-thirds, of a day on Thursday. I encourage you, as you have interest in items that you want to make sure that we spend time on during that planning retreat, please make sure that I'm aware of that, and we'll certainly get that scheduled in our agenda as well. But I can already let you know it is full. I mean, full in that we have lots to discuss, and we certainly will accommodate other items of interest that you may have as well. But we have completed our citizen survey, and we will be presenting the results of that as part of that meeting. I think you will be very, very pleased with the results of that, as we continue to monitor the level of service, or at least our community's perception of our level of service here. And I think that'll be a great way for us to kick off that session. So do want to make sure that you have those on your calendar. We'll send reminders by email to all of you on that as well. We do want to make you aware that we are evaluating now a request by the Leadership Greer Class, the most current class. They have a project that they're working on, and it would involve some modification over at the J. Vern Smith Human Resource Center. That class desires to purchase and install an outdoor refrigerator unit. We've asked them for some documentation on how that would be screened, how that would be serviced, whether or not that's a temporary measure or not. So we are awaiting some additional information on that request. The one thing that we've indicated is that it indeed would have to be completely screened. It does not modify our existing building in any regard. But, again, we've asked them for some additional information so that we could properly evaluate whether that would be appropriate for that area, particularly adjacent to the parking lot area, the bank behind there, and its proximity to, obviously, Victoria Street, Depot Street, Randall Street, and Trade Street, since it's right there in the middle. So we're trying to make some evaluation of that at this time. And also, wanted to provide you with some update concerning our snow event this past week. Very, very pleased with our staff's coordination and work during the snow event. We are always looking for opportunities of how we can improve our service to our community, but wanted to give you a little bit of the statistics that go into that type of effort and what was involved. As you are well aware, we fell on the weekend mostly, except for that Friday. Our event came in on Thursday evening. We did bring, through our Public Services Department, we brought in 11 employees that evening. They were on standby and began their work on our streets at 9:00 p.m. Thursday evening, working through Monday morning when they reported to their regular shift at 7:30. We had 415 hours of overtime that was logged by those employees during that period. We did 1,368 miles of plowing and sanding of city streets. There was 105 tons of sand that was spread in various areas to provide for better traction. And we had, right at eight locations, where we had downed trees or limbs that either entered into the roadway, or we assisted Greer CPW during that event. Did have one accident. Our snowplow got a little too close to a mailbox, and so we went back on Monday and made those repairs to that property owner's mailbox, but that was the only damage that we incurred through public services. Friday evening, we had a fire truck that had a little bit of problems with traction, but we were eventually able to get that taken care of. They were answering a medical call. Had a little bit of trouble with that, but no damage to the vehicle. We were able to, Public Services was able to assist with that. Our Recreation Department also assists with much of that effort that's taking place out there. They're mainly involved with our park areas, our public areas, our sidewalk areas. 11,400 lineal feet of sidewalks were scraped during the snow event by the Parks and Recreation Department. They provided, in the overtime area, 51 additional man-hours of overtime, and they applied 1,100 pounds of ice melt to sidewalk areas across the city. All of our folks were on board and available. We brought in extra personnel, two additional personnel at the Fire Department, because we wanted to make sure that if we had any incidents, we had folks on staff. And then the Police Department, we brought our traffic unit in during the event for them to work additional traffic. But we were very, very fortunate. We asked our community to stay indoors during the event, and that mostly happened. During the height of the snow event, the ice event, we had very, very little activity out on the streets, so that kept our call volume very low, and that was good for us. And then, as things started to get better and conditions were better, we were able to get more traffic moving out there as well. So, again, our staff fully on board through the weekend, particularly those folks that were responsible for streets. We kept them in until they went back on their regular shift Monday morning. Certainly available to answer any questions that you may have relative to how we respond to those types of events, but just as, and I shared with you by email as we were preparing for that, one of the things that we do is, the leadership team, the management team, we gather and discuss our operations. We make sure that all of our equipment is prepared. We make sure that all of our facilities are equipped and prepared for the event, because we just really never know what to expect. We have our forecast, but we have to be prepared in a worst-case scenario. And so all hands are on deck when that happens, and, again, our folks responded extremely well to that. We will be debriefing. We did some of that debriefing on Monday at a staff meeting, and we will continue that over the next couple of weeks. Again, always looking for improvement opportunities of things that we can do better, as our community continues to grow and continues to change. our community continues to grow and continues to change. But very, very pleased with our response to that event this past weekend. That concludes my report. I do ask council's consideration for several items in executive session. My apologies for that. It's been quite some time since we've met in executive session for a number of these items, but I do need your consideration for one personnel matter involving our Parks and Recreation Department. I have three economic development matters that we need to brief council on. None of those will require action of council this evening, but we do need to brief you and bring you up to date. I'll be asking Mr. Reno Deaton to join us for that portion of the meeting. And then I have one contractual matter that we have been approached about to consider as a contractual matter with the city. I need to brief council on that. And again, I do not anticipate any action by council, but I will need some direction of how you would like for me to proceed with that proposed contract. One personnel, three economic development, and one contractual that I would ask of you for your consideration in executive session.
Thank you, sir. We have an opening on our Recreation Association Board of Trustees. In District 2, Edward Ballinger's term has expired. Mr. Griffin, anyone to nominate this evening?
Yes, may I like to nominate Travis Ware.
Travis Ware. And I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Good.
Right. Any questions or additional information required in that regard? Hearing done. Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, as you're aware, we spent some time on dissecting the quotes that we had in regards to the Century Park, but as the administrator made you aware, there was some additional information that was provided to our Recreation Department following our discussion. And Mr. Watson is here to give us an update and hopefully some information about options to proceed. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Mayor Danner, and members of council, for the opportunity to present you with a complete overview on this project tonight, kind of show you where we started, and bring you up to speed on where we are now. It's hard to believe that this process started all the way back in 2013. We started by receiving notification of the upcoming grant cycle at our state recreation conference. The next month, we identified Century Park as the target for the grant because the limitations for this cycle were to properties that had received LWCF funds in the past. In February of 2014, we met with David Langley to create a project budget for the letter of intent. That budget was $399,000 and included a two-story building, 1,500 total square feet, 750 square feet upstairs for press box and athletic storage, 750 square feet downstairs for concessions and restrooms. We also included a slightly elevated plaza around three to five feet around the building because the existing building sits in a low spot where mud and water flood after heavy In March, we submitted the letter of intent for the grant, and in April, SCPRT notified us that the project did in fact qualify for submission, and we presented the grant to you requesting for permission to apply for it. In May, we proceeded with submitting the actual application, and in August, we received notification from SCPRT that we had been awarded the grant. In October, staff from SCPRT came down to review the grant policies with our staff and granted us permission to proceed with the project. And in December, we had the property surveyed by Blue Ridge Land Surveying Services. In February through April of 2015, department staff met several times with Langley and Associates to design the building. We brought Ruthie Helms to the table to ensure that the building met all ADA standards. We found that if the second floor of the building exceeded 500 square feet, we would need an elevator or a chairlift to make that floor accessible, which was not a budgeted item. We also discovered that the existing breaker boxes for field lighting needed a barrier around them for safety purposes because of the amount of power that was handled through those electrical panels. With this information, we had to rethink the design of the building. After reviewing several different possibilities from Langley and Associates, we opted to move forward with the layout that included three structures. The first being a smaller two-story building with concessions on the bottom, 400 square feet, and press box of 250 square feet on the second floor, still with an elevated apron around the building that's highlighted in red on the picture. Press box accommodations for accessibility can be made by providing wireless controllers to control the scoreboards at the ground level. The second building was down towards the batting cages and included restrooms, equipment storage, and a covered picnic shelter. Also included was an enclosure around the light panels that would be aesthetically consistent with the other two buildings. At the council retreat in February, we discussed budgeting for the project in the upcoming fiscal year. We also discussed the possibility of additional or unexpected project costs potentially being paid from hospitality and stormwater funds. In May, we asked David Langley to provide us with an updated construction budget because allotted changed since we originally started the project. He obtained a budget from a local construction company that came back at $372,000. That did not include professional fees of $36,000, bringing the new project budget to $408,000 total. Now that figure did not include demolition of the building because we were already looking for ways to save costs, and we felt that pulling the demolition out of the bid package may save us a little bit of money from general contractor markup. In June, Langley and Associates proceeded with creating construction documents, and at this point, we knew realistically that there would be no way to complete construction before the fall season started, so we moved our target construction date for the winter. In August, we bid the demolition of the building, and Capitol Construction was awarded the job and took the building down. In the beginning of September, we had a safety walkthrough on site before fall baseball started, and the day before it rained about two inches. The effects of the rain were evident. There were several spectator areas that had standing water in them, and the fields were completely washed out. After discussing the amount of money that we put back into the fields year after year for replacing clay and turfis and quick dry and additional dirt, we decided to inquire about the possibility of addressing these issues during construction by using stormwater funds. We received confirmation from our Finance Department that this would qualify for that fund, and we asked Langley and Associates to include enhanced grading, additional catch basins, and extended plaza replacement. This picture shows the building with a bright red outline around it, which was the original area to be addressed for stormwater. The lighter red area shaded in shows the new areas to be addressed for stormwater issues. It was always our intent that if the cost for this came back too high, then we could pull it out of the project and go with what the original plan was. In October, the field lights went out during adult softball play, and we could not get the lights come back on. We ended up having to send the teams home for that night. I went down to the field later on because I'm very familiar with the electrical panels to kind of see what was going on, and I noticed that the main breaker in one of the panels had tripped. I'd never seen that before. I went to reset the 200-amp breaker, and as soon as I did and shifted it back into the old position, a flame flew out of the panel, and it immediately tripped back. So the next day, we contacted the lighting company to come and look at the panel and let us know if it could be repaired. And basically, they told us that they could put a Band-Aid on it, but it certainly would not be an effective or a longstanding repair, and it was going to eventually have to be replaced. This is because of continuous repairs over the years resulting from spliced wiring to light poles, different phases of power to the fields, and inadequate panel sizes. We decided to inquire about the possibility of using hospitality funds to pay for relocating the panels to the rear of the new building, establishing consistent power phase to all three fields in a secure and safe panel with new wiring from the panel to the infield poles. We received notification from Finance Department that it would qualify for these funds, so we met on site with Greer CPW, Ruthie Helms, the lighting company, the project electrical engineer, and David Langley to iron out specs for the plans. Just like the grading, we knew that this component of the project, if it came back too high, we could pull it out and go for the original design of the building around In November, we met with Steve Grant, Billy Campbell, David Seifer, Jim Ridgell, and David Langley to review the plans and the bid structure before the bid documents were prepared. Shortly thereafter, the bid package was prepared by Langley and Associates and reviewed by our staff in the Finance Department. The bid form specifically asked for grading and site work and field lighting to be identified as unit prices included in the base bid. There was one alternate that we asked to be included, and that was to provide asphalt instead of concrete. We presented an update to City Council on November 10th showing renderings of the final layout, and we advertised the project for bid on November 25th. On December 2nd, we held a mandatory pre-bid on-site and had 16 general contractors attend. The meeting went very well. We thoroughly explained why we wanted grading and field lighting to be identified as unit prices. We had no questions. We opened bids on December 16th. There were only three companies that submitted bids. What we found out was that the forecasted wet winter on a 90-day project and the liquidated damages clause discouraged some of the GCs from actually submitting a bid. Laser Construction was the low bidder at $523,900. Their cost for grading and site work is listed under unit price 1 for $90,000. Field lighting was listed as unit price 2 for $54,900, and asphalt was listed under alternate 1 as a deduct of $5,000. We met with Mr. Driggers and recommended awarding the job to Laser Construction and requested permission to proceed at the January 12th council meeting. You approved moving forward with $200,000 originally budgeted for the project with a $200,000 grant match, $90,000 from stormwater for the grading, and $90,000 from hospitality for field lighting and contingency. That night during the council meeting, we were asked if the plans had been reviewed, and we answered yes because we thought the intent of the question was to assure that we had pulled members from other city departments to the table during the planning and design phase of the process. Following the meeting, we learned that the plans had not been submitted by Langley and Associates, so to ensure the quickest delivery, our staff picked them up from David Langley's office the following morning and submitted them to Ruthie Helms. That same afternoon, we met with Laser Construction, David Langley, and David Seifer to discuss proceeding with the job, the timeframe, the contract, and about pulling the field lighting part out of the job for us to self-perform. The meeting went very well. Laser had no issues with us pulling field lighting out, and David Langley was going to proceed with putting the contract together. At 5:30 that same day, I received an email from Laser Construction stating after our meeting, they had reviewed their notes from the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and they were under the impression that field lighting was an alternate, not a unit price. They said they had no problems with us pulling field lighting out, but their base bid still remained $523,900. I immediately asked if the other unit price for grading and site work was also not included in the base bid, but they stated that it was. So what this meant was that their base bid of $523,900 included site work. If we wanted them to perform field lighting, there would be an increase of $54,900, bringing their project total now to $578,800. We notified Laser that we would not be issuing a notice to proceed and that we would bring the project back to City Council for further direction. And that brings us to where we are now. Obviously, the situation with Laser Construction increases the total project price by $54,900, and that's not the amount that you approved at the last meeting. We feel that there are three options at this point. A, we can award the job to Sossman Construction because they are now the low bidder by $800. We contacted Sossman to confirm that the two unit prices were included in their base bid, and they confirmed that they are. We would also ask them to start construction in June if they were in fact awarded the job. It doesn't appear to us to be feasible. Construction can be completed by opening day at this point. Delaying until June would give us the option to host our Easter egg hunt, youth baseball practices, and games at Century Park without a construction site being present. Option B would be to rebid the project. Since we are looking at a June start date, we could advertise for bids again and hope to get a more favorable number by offering a June start date and summertime work climate. Option C, if you are not comfortable with the design of the project or scopes of work, we can start over, redesign from scratch. This would obviously put us beyond the completion date of the project, but we could apply for an extension on the grant. We're in no way recommending one option over another, nor are we implying that these are the only options. These are simply the ones that we've came up with through staff discussions. We've identified some future dates on the slide for your information. We just wanted to make sure that you had all of the information pertinent to the project while making your decision. Ms. Cunningham obviously is here, and David Langley with Langley and Associates, the architects of the project, are also here, and will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel?
When is that grant due?
The grant deadline is in October of this year.
Mr. Watson, I appreciate the timeline. I think that gives us a full understanding of how this project has unfolded. Unfortunately, I don't know that I find it any more settling after having heard all that than I did realizing what had taken place here sort of at the end. Help me if you will. You mentioned at one point in time that we pulled the demolition out of the project costs because we were going to do it ourselves, but then did I hear you say that Capitol Construction did the demolition?
Yes, sir. We did pull it out, and we bid the demolition back in August. So the demolition was already completed before we advertised for bids for the rest of the project.
Would it be typical that, in this department, or any department for that matter, I mean, would it be typical that we would be handling projects of this size in terms of internally, within the department, making the plans, dealing with the contractors and all that? I mean, is that a standard operating procedure in terms of how that works?
Construction projects within Parks and Rec, they manage their own construction projects.
Well, I guess my question then is, and just to quit beating around the bush, is how did we get from $365,000 to $600,000 when neither one of these alternates, maybe the grading was included, maybe not, but knowing that we had a fairly limited pot of money and that we did have electrical panels to deal with and grading to deal with and some other structural changes and that sort of thing, it seems to me like this whole thing has been taken on a life of its own as we've sort of moved through here. Was there regular attempts to try and ascertain where we were and what was going on as this thing kind of continued to, I'm not going to say spiral out of control, but gain a whole new life of its own here? I mean...
If I may, the two attempts that staff made at that was both in February and in the March-April area. First in February, when we met with council during the planning retreat to discuss the scope of the project. We indicated then that we would possibly need and would probably need additional resources from both our stormwater and from our hospitality fund.
I recall that.
We did that again during the budget workshop session. And so the reason that we presented the timeline was to indicate that the scope of work did indeed change when we determined that there were ADA accessibility requirements that we had on-site, as well as the need to do the additional stormwater and the electrical panel work. panel work. As Mr. Watson indicated, we've always reserved the option that we could not do those things. We could not make the improvements to the storm drainage, but we feel that that's very necessary. But it doesn't have to be done. We can construct the buildings without doing that work, as well as we can fence the electrical panels and keep them separated from the new building that's being built. Our belief has been all along that that work would be most economical and in the long term be most economical if we were able to keep that within budget in what we anticipated for stormwater and for hospitality. We were in pretty good shape until we confirmed that the low bid was indeed an additional Until that point, we could have proceeded forward under what you have already approved and what we've already discussed. But now, with that $54,900 being added to what we believed to be the low bid, those dollars aren't within the numbers. And so, the issue that we had was you approved a low bid that isn't indeed the bid amount. So, we had to bring that back to council. From a direction standpoint, again, what we have to know is do we redesign? Do we rebid? Or do we award to the low bidder, the new low bidder? But we do that at an amount of $54,100 more than we anticipated two weeks ago.
And I understand and agree. You know, I certainly wouldn't want to have identified the grading issue or the electrical issue and then chosen not to do anything about it. I understand that. And I understand that incorporating it into the project as we went along made sense. So, I'm not, you know, while I raised the question of how have we got from basically double where we started almost, I understand those. I just, you know, if those pieces were things that we, and I don't know why we would have chosen to leave them out, but if that was the way we wanted to proceed looking at that, you know, how we didn't come to identify those as pieces unless this is just a mistake on the contractor's part or on ours or whatever happened?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, total bids came in at an amount greater than we anticipated that those bids would come in. When cost estimates were done, we anticipated that that would come in lower. Again, as Mr. Watson indicated, in conversation with, we had 14 general contractors that came to the pre-bid. As we followed up with many of those contractors after the fact, they indicated that they chose not to bid because of the timeline and because of a clause for liquidated damages if they were not completed by the opening of the spring season. And so, we're only left to believe that there could be dollars within those bids to provide insurance for the contractor against those potential costs. We don't know that, but it potentially could be. And so, we didn't get the pricing that we had hoped that we would get when we went to bid. It's not a design-build project. It's design it and put it out to bid. And the only numbers that we had to go off of were the budget numbers that were provided to us by a third-party general contractor, and they came in higher than what was projected. I mean, for budgeting, I mean, from a staff position, it always puts us in a position that for anything that we do, we feel like we've got to put 20%, 30% on a budget simply so that we don't ever have a situation that bids come in higher. But we don't necessarily think that that's, you know, that's good public policy either in overprojecting what we believe the cost could be. This caught us all off-guard. However, the total cost, again, in the original timeline, the projection of $399, if we did not have site work and we did not have the electrical work for the lighting, you pull that out with the additional redesign for the ADA, and if you subtract what we self-performed, and by self-perform, I mean we contracted for that demolition, if you pull that out, those numbers are now pretty close.
Around $25,000 to $30,000.
Yeah, within $25,000 to $30,000.
Well, I don't offer these questions as an indictment of the staff or the way it's handled. You know, I do find it a little bit troubling that through the course of, I mean, you know, if this was something that, you know, if this was a private project, would it have gone this way? Well, maybe or maybe not. I'm just, you know, I'm just not sure. I just, you know, it seems like we kind of dug ourselves a hole here of what started out to innocently be enough, innocently enough reconstructing a bathroom facility and concession stand has grown in terms of the scope. And I've not got any problem with that as long as we're making valid improvements. And certainly, I don't want somebody going out there and getting electrocuted or whatever with the, trying to flip an electrical panel on, and I understand the grading issues. I'm not going to be comfortable with this unless we rebid it and look at the structure on how it's bid. I just think we've worked ourselves into a position here that we need to scrap what we've got, reexamine our bid, and whether or not it's the way that it's worded bid or whatever, that we have those options if we want them, not that I'm intending to do that. I did vote to do it at the price that we had agreed on doing it, and I think it's a wise use of our money. But I simply just don't see going forward with what we've got. If we've got time to rebid it and have the work performed in the summer before the deadline, that suits me fine, but I'm not going to be comfortable proceeding with the next lowest bidder or whatever based on where we are right now.
And for that reason, we very intentionally have moved the project to post-spring, to a summer construction project for that very reason. Even if council's direction was for us to move to the other bidder, the new lower bidder, even if that was your instruction to us, we felt extremely uncomfortable that that could be achieved by the opening day in the spring. So, we immediately moved forward with temporary, planning for temporary measures for that facility. So, the time is there. If we would like to rebid it, we have time to do that. If we choose to go with the low bid, we will do the contract, and we'll give them a notice to proceed at the conclusion of the spring season. But we needed, we wanted to give complete, full disclosure to council of how this project has progressed, how we got to where we are, make sure that we answered any questions that we have, and solicit advice that if there's some part of the process that we could do differently moving forward. We're very, very open to that because we recognize how this project has moved. We had council met more than once in December. We would have been four weeks ahead of the project simply because we were prepared to go, those bids were prepared, but we only met once. That's no fault of councils. That's no fault of staff. It's no fault of the contractor. It was the calendar. But because of how that failed, we received that information, and we needed council to come in for your first meeting in January to be able to present that. We were fully prepared to enter into a contract until we discovered that that unit cost was indeed not a unit cost within the amount that was bid. It would be added on. That invalidated the action that council took. And so, when we lost, when we lost those additional, at minimum, two more weeks, we just, we knew that there was no way that we could get in and get that project finished by the opening day for spring. And so, yes, yes, Mayor, yes, council, you have time, and we are very, very open to doing that as you see appropriate for us to proceed.
So, the Sosman bid, the base bid does include everything. Is that right?
Yes, sir. We contacted them to make sure that they interpreted it as we intended, and they confirmed that their base bid did include the two unit prices. I think they did not include an alternate for asphalt and concrete, but their base bid does, so they would do the project with asphalt or concrete for the same price, but that number does include the grading and the field lighting.
Well, if the time is good, I tend to agree with the mayor that, especially with the number of buildings that bid in this fund, it may be that we could get several lower bids on the whole project. If the time's there, I'd rather see it go back for bid.
I'd agree. I think it was more of a misunderstanding on that part. Only thing I did want to find out on the grant side of it, would we jeopardize anything losing that by asking for the extension?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so. We would stay ahead right now and go ahead and notify the representative from PRT how things have progressed to this point and let them know that we will not be starting construction until June, find out if we in fact do need to apply for an extension, what the deadline would be, so we don't miss that.
We'll be penalized, okay.
But I don't believe so.
Now, how do we ensure that everybody's on the same page as far as what's included in the bid? I mean, if you have one contractor that says, I understand, you know, that was included, and you have another one says, well, I didn't think that was included, I mean, how do we protect ourselves to make sure that everybody knows? You know, because I'm saying I want it to be a fair, you don't want somebody coming up afterwards and saying, well, you didn't tell me that, you know, and now you've awarded it to him.
We'll underline it and bold it.
Yeah.
Have them break it down, you know?
It's, yeah.
We thought it was.
And that is the purpose and intent.
I mean, I ain't calling nobody a liar, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yes, sir.
And that was our position, is that we go, look, we understand that this is a misunderstanding in the process. We, you know, our intent and other contractors interpreted the way we intended it to be interpreted. This particular contractor did not for whatever reason. But we will have a mandatory bid, a pre-bid conference again, and in that, we will communicate that again, that those are unit prices so that, and we need the unit pricing because of the funds that we're using. I mean, that's the reason that we did the unit pricing, so that if we used stormwater, we knew how much we could use. If we were using other resources, we knew how much of those to use. So, that was necessary, and then the alternate was just for us to determine whether or not we could save money by going with asphalt versus concrete.
I agree with the mayor, too. I think it should be rebid, you know, and just see what we come up with.
Well, we would ask of council then this evening is a motion to rebid the project so that we have that as a matter of record in allowing us to proceed.
Counsel, it's a suggestion of staff. I'll entertain a motion that we rebid the Century Park, Park Improvements project.
So, move.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Mr. Watson, thank you for your time and your effort in this regard, and staff for pulling this together for us. Any other comments? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, on executive session, we've been asked to entertain one personnel matter, three economic development matters, and one contractual matter. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So, move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, on executive session, we've considered one personnel matter, three economic development matters, and one contractual matter. We've taken no action in regards to any of those items. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So, move.
Second.
Second? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.